It's useful, you could use that. Over here on this table, we have butter churns. This is one of the activities that the children get to use on Pioneer Day in the fall. They get to make homemade butter. This is a coffee grinder, or spices, one or the other. And over here in this cabinet, there are a whole lot of things we could describe, but I won't take the time now. But the story of using, mixing starch, to starch the collars and cuffs. You make kind of a pudding, the consistency of a pudding. And you dip the collars and cuffs into the water and pudding mixture, so to speak. Hang it out to dry, bring it in, sprinkle the cloves, wrap them in a towel so it's evenly moist, then unroll it the next day and get to use your handy satin iron to iron out the wrinkles. And then, of course, there was no Gerber's baby food, so they'd cook vegetables and puree them through the puree, or mashed potatoes, anybody could eat it. And many did a lot of canning, since they raised fruit and vegetables. The Ball Company is an old, old, old fruit jar manufacturing company, but you'd have to sterilize everything, and then you'd fill it with your fruit or vegetables, put a rubber gasket or washer in there, put the lid back on, lining up the groove, so that the big metal loop can fit in there, and then push down, and it will be thoroughly canned, sealed from air. Of course, the new, modern method is actually basically the same, but the washer is built into the metal lid. Once you have the jars and the screw part, all you have to do is buy the replacement metal lids. You screw it on tight, and wait a minute, and you'll hear a popping sound, which shows you that the oxygen is out, the air is out. There are all kinds of tools. The meat grinder fastens to the edge of the table. You decide if you want fine grind or coarse grind, and screw it on tightly, and then put chunks of meat in there, and turn the handle, and it forces it through the grinding, the grinder here. A favorite job for children before or after school was to gather eggs. These are decoy eggs. You can see that hands have pecked at them, but the theory was that if you have one of these, slide it under the hand, take the good egg, and leave the decoy, you won't get pecked yourself. Moving over to the stove, this is a wood stove. And it was vented out the wall. This was the original outdoor wall. Usually ask anybody if they know what this is. Most young folks say it's a cheese grater. It's a toaster. Put the bread on the little racks here, put it over coals, you can use it when you go camping, and when it's brown on one side, you flip it over and brown the other side. Making waffles was about the same as today, except there was no electricity, so you used cast iron waffle iron. You put the batter in here, close it up, let it brown, flip it over, and let it brown on the other side. I think everybody knows, or perhaps has used one of these. You slide it open, put some oil and kernels in there, and close it, and shake it over a fire, campfire, fireplace, stove, whatever, and you get popcorn. Since there was no electricity, this was a good job for children also. You'd hang your carpets, or carpets you braided rugs, over a tree limb or the clothesline, and you'd beat the dirt out of the rugs. To have water in the kitchen, they'd bring water from the cistern and put it in a stone crock, and they could ladle it out with a long-handled ladle. And doing dishes, you'd fill the enamel pans, one for washing and one for rinsing, and you could use any table or whatever to set them on. Over here in the corner, we have a variety of items. This is a cream pail. When they separated the cream from the milk, which was in the large milk pail in the corner, the cream was put in a smaller bucket. And then it could be used in the butter makers that we showed earlier, the hand cranked butter maker. If there was an ice box, an iceman came every other day or so with a big block of ice. It came in a wagon, horse-drawn or motorized, and he'd come in with a big block of ice in these hooks with a leather protector on his shoulder, and put it in the ladies' ice box. But that made another chore, in that every now and then, you had to empty the catcher under the, under the ice box, which was the melted ice block, otherwise it would overflow onto the floor. Over here is a Hoosier cabinet. It was an item that could be brought west in the covered wagon, in that it came in two parts, the upper part and the lower part. It's fastened right here on both sides. This is a smaller model. Some of them fit the whole wall, but an interesting fact is this convenience. This held about 25 pounds of flour. It was rodent-proof, no mice. You could see how much flour you had, and then when you were making biscuits or pie crust, you just turned the crank, and the flour came down sifted into your measuring cup. What more could a housewife want? Then, this pulled out. You'd shake the flour on it and roll out the dough here, and then you had your biscuit cutter, or cookie cutter, or little pie crust for tarts. Since there was no electricity, you had to use a hand-operated egg beater. They're so old that some of them don't work. The question is, people ask, what is that? It's a meatball maker. Nowadays, you make them in your hands and forget the tool. We're all familiar with this, but this is made out of old, tight steel. You could also seat three kids around here to eat lunch or breakfast. Another convenience was the breadboard. And then down here, we have a bread box. It's also rodent-proof, no mice could get in there. That about covers what we have here in the kitchen. The kitchen could be any room in the house for that matter, just so you had an outside wall, you could vent the stove pipe through.
Thanks so much, Beverly. That was really fascinating, a real trip down memory lane for me. Reminds me of my grandmother's cottage in England. Really a wonderful tour, thank you so much.
Well, thank you for coming, and anybody else who would love to be a volunteer here, we sure appreciate it. We're looking for new members and volunteers.
Absolutely, viewers. If you have a few hours to spare, come on here to the Chatsworth Historical Society. I'm here with Andre van der Volk. He's the co-president of the Chatsworth Historical Society. He's here with his grandchildren today. He's going to tell us a little bit about this very special place and this very special event. Andre, tell us what's happening here today.
Well, thank you, Helen. Good afternoon to you. The Homestead Acre is an acre and a third in Chatsworth, in the northwest part of the San Fernando Valley, and we do this twice a year. And this is our fundraising. We're self-sustaining, no tax funds are involved or anything else, and we keep up these beautiful grounds and the historical cottage in the background and the museum. And we've been doing this, actually since 19, the 1960s, the mid-1960s, and one of the first things we did was we moved the church, the Little Pioneer Church, into what is now at the end of Lassen Street, which is the memorial park.
Okay, so that was originally here, on this site?
No, it was actually original on Topanga.
Okay.
But it was one of the first projects we did. And then, in order to, like I said, sustain us every year, why, we do this twice a year. We have our festival in the, in the springtime, and then also we have one in the fall.
Wonderful.
Now, the grandkids are here, they're actually working today. Now, this one is starting.
Oh, that's...
This is my youngest one, this is Brody.
This is Brody.
And he'll start, and he'll, he'll grab drinks and things like this, he knows the difference on that. And then Brooke here, she goes ahead and she kind of figures out how much it is, and then she'll grab the drinks. And then this Charlie, he's actually in charge, and he's learning how to use the cash box, so he uses this math and everything else. And then my two veterans over there.
Okay.
That's my oldest granddaughter, and Bryce, that's the second-oldest one, they're full-fledged cashiers, so they know how to make change. And I think it surprises most people when they, when they find out in school that they know how to make change off of a $10 bill, or a $5 bill, or whatever it may be.
Now, Hunter, you, you're wearing the Girl Scout, what do you call this? What is this, your sash you're wearing here? So, have you brought more Girl Scouts along with you today?
Yeah.
So, your troop actually comes along here and helps with these events?
Yeah, this is our second time coming together. First, we went over there, we planted flowers, and then we're helping here today.
That's wonderful. And what do you like most about coming here?
Um, probably the hot dog stand.
Is it the eating the hot dogs, or are you actually serving them?
Equal.
I bet. Bryce, what do you do when you come along? What's your favorite thing to do?
My favorite thing is to come here and learn the interesting history and teach other people about it.
It really is a fascinating place to come, so we're actually encouraging viewers, if you live anywhere near this place, if you're anywhere in the Chatsworth area, or even the wider San Fernando Valley, come along and be a volunteer here. These grounds are kept by volunteers. I believe they come along on a Wednesday and do gardening here. Lots to do here, it's a wonderful place, so I really encourage you, viewers, if you've got a few extra hours on hand, come along here and be a volunteer, it's such a rewarding experience.
Thank you, Helen. As far as the hot dogs are concerned, this one has set the record. I think she's eaten five hot dogs.
Oh, for goodness sake!
All right, Brody? Yeah, I'll hold those, buddy.
Anyway, that's not, not too bad a record to have, so, viewers, come on here to Chatsworth Historical Society and help them out, you'll really enjoy yourself. I'm here with Betty Summers, and she's one of the volunteers that tends these fabulous gardens. In fact, I think you're the chief volunteer in charge of gardens, aren't you?
In charge of the gardens, yes.
Tell me, Betty, how much work is this?
Oh, there's lots of work. You can work up here every day, all day, if you wanted to. And you have to deadhead the roses, especially this time of year.
Yeah.
They're blooming, and, and we have to fight the swirls and the rabbits. The rabbits have been moving in, they love our flowers too, but...
So, lots of work for you, year-round.
Year-round. We have a few volunteers, but we could sure use a lot more.
So, as we say, viewers, any of you with a few hours to spare, who wouldn't enjoy coming here and working in these wonderful gardens and making some new friends? So, please, come on and join Betty here and be a volunteer, you'll really enjoy it.
Yeah, it's very peaceful here, because we're kind of out by ourselves in this park, and you can relax and forget all your problems while you're working the garden.
And that's what we need to do today, so, so, viewers, come on and join Betty, you're really going to be glad you did. Thanks so much to everybody here at the Chatsworth Historical Society. We've had a wonderful day. Join us next time for Aging Well in L.A.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 22nd, 2011, here in the John F. Rau Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We want to welcome those viewers on Channel 35, as well as the folks who have joined us today in council chambers. Always good to see you, and thank you for taking time out of your day to join us for our council proceedings. We also are available three or four other ways. You can go down to San Pedro or Van Nuys City Council Chambers, if that's closer to where you live, not only to follow the council proceedings, but also to testify remotely for any public comment. You can also track us on your telephone by calling the following number, 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY, and you can listen in to any of our council proceedings, as well as our committee hearings. And then finally, you can also go online at lacity.org and click on the links on the left side. We have live streaming webcasts of each of these council meetings, and for your convenience, we archive our past council meetings, along with all the supporting materials and agendas, reports that council members have. Those are all available for your convenience online. Thank you to the council for being here on time. We're still expecting Councilmember Reyes, Parks, Corcoran, and Alarcon, but meantime, Madam Clerk, we have 10 members, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Engler, Weiser, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Weston, Zion, Garcetti, Timmer is present and accor, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, and Ms. Perry seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Engler moves, Mr. Caress seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. If I can ask everybody, on Tuesday, we have a salute to the flag, if I can ask everybody, please rise in chambers. And Oscar Arslanian, can I impose upon you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance from the podium over there? A great guest and civic activist from Hollywood.
Nyla too. Nyla. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If we can run through today's agenda for any items, colleagues, you wish to call special, this would be the time to call them. We have items that have had public hearings, and those which have not yet, those which have not yet had public hearings will automatically be triggered by a card from the public for a hearing. Those that have already had a public hearing will require councilmembers to reopen that, otherwise the hearing and committee will suffice. So, first items, please.
Items 1 through 10, our Department of Building and Safety leans notice for public hearing.
Okay, do we have any cards for this?
No cards.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings. Anybody wishing to call 1 through 10 special, colleagues? Any items 1 through 10? Seeing no specials, let's go ahead and take up those items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, 11 through 17, any specials? Mr. Cardenas?
17, for two weeks.
Well, I, I, hold on a second. I received a call this morning from IT General Manager, she has a medical issue, so we're looking at continuing it for at least a week, maybe two weeks will be safe.
To be safe, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay, two weeks will take us, colleagues, to December 6th.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue item number 17 to the 6th of December. Other specials? If not, let's go ahead and take up the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Zion was speaking there. Item number 15, was that just approved?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I'd like to call it special, because I...
Okay, we'll come back to that, just let me run through the rest of the agenda, we'll come back for reconsideration. Let's go ahead and take up the next items, please.
Items 18 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. Item 19 is a commission appointment, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Uh, yes, we'll hold 19 without objection, we'll consider all these. Are there specials, Ms. Perry?
I was just going to call 18 and 28 special for Mr. Parks.
Okay.
Okay, great.
18 and 28. Yes, 15?
Yeah.
Uh, we already passed that, but we're going to reconsider it. Mr. Labange asked that to be reconsidered, we'll come back to that. Any other specials, 18 through 33? 18 through 33. If not, do we have any cards on any?
Cards on 18 and 23.
Okay.
And 22.
Okay, we'll call this special for cards on the public and close the other public hearings. If we can please take up the balance of the items left in this section, please open up the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
The supplemental agenda, item 34 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Item 34, colleagues, anybody wishing to call 34 special? 34 special, if not, we'll take up item 34 for a vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Items 35 and 36 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. 10 votes required for consideration, there are cards on both items.
Okay, we'll go, call both those special for cards. We can open the roll on reconsideration of number 15. Let's go ahead and please open the roll on reconsideration. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, 15 is reconsidered, Mr. Labange and Mr. Rosendahl called that special. That'll take us to our general public comment, and then we'll come back to take up the commission appointment. Our first speaker is Mark Lippman, he'll be followed by Sean Murphy. Good morning.
Good morning, hello again. My name is Mark Lippman with Occupy Los Angeles, I speak on my own behalf. First, I would like to thank the city for its attempt to address our body. We received a proposal from the city yesterday, and had a healthy debate on it regarding that, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the term, the carrot and the stick. As far as Occupy goes, I think everyone's kind of realized that the stick is no longer going to work, that real solutions have to be brought forward. And so, for the carrot, just so you know, what you've presented to us is this. What we're asking for is this, and actually, this is much smaller than what we need, because I got hungry on the way in. But just so you know the difference of what we're talking about. Our issues must be addressed, our concerns with the politics, the issues regarding our system, the banking structure, and the rest of the laws in this country must be addressed. A simple office is not going to do it. And also, the official place for the city to address our body is at our General Assembly. That is at 200 South, 200 North Spring, South Stairs, right outside the store, every night at 7:30. If the city has something to present to the occupation movement, that is the proper form to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Murphy, after that is Laser Haas.
Yes, good morning, Senate Council, Senate Council. I hope you're in Jurn in memory of Father Dollar Bill today, after your meeting.
Maurice Chase.
Maurice Chase, okay, I'm sorry. In Jurn in memory of him. I hope 2012's a better year, and I hope, and I hope you're in, I hope we're having our Hollywood Christmas Parade on Sunday, I always go to it every year. Okay, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, I have two, my choir's giving a Christmas concert, and I have two flyers here for you, one for the council, and one for the city control, my friend, the city troller. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Laser Haas is our next speaker, and after that will be Cheryl Ickley.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Laser Haas, and I bring forth to you today, part two of the saga of Mitt Romney's Bain entity and their cohort Goldman Sachs fraud against the Los Angeles Public Company. 1,000 jobs were destroyed, and 1 billion in fraud has transpired against E Toys. As a daily Occupy LA protester, many ask me, why are we here? My response to them is the same I ask this council, why are you not occupying with us? Secretly, Goldman Sachs and Bain's attorney is M&amp;A T. That law firm illegally conspired to become E Toys debtor counsel, and gave their client to Bain for free, doing so with the help of Mitt Romney's other secret attorney, Paul Traub. Mitt Romney's Bain now owns Toys R Us, which stole E Toys by federal fraud. They offered me an $800,000 bribe, and I said no. When they caught them red-handed, lying to the court 34 times, they had to confess. But the police and the courts let them retaliate against me, they submitted a forgery to the court, stating I waived my right to be paid $3 million. This is absurd. The court accepted the forgery into the docket record, and then said, since I waived my rights, I could no longer inform the court about the crimes. Mitt Romney's cohorts and Goldman Sachs are blatantly and frequently defying the laws, and bragging they are untouchable. Such perversions and open corruptions of our system of justice fuels the fire of the Occupy movement. In conclusion, all we ask for, what we are entitled to, is for one public servant to do their job. Will you sit by idle while Romney's cohorts and Goldman Sachs conspire in Delaware to steal from Californians? Or will you help us defend our constitution from enemies foreign and domestic? Goldman Sachs is dying, their CEO has hired a criminal defense attorney already. I submit to you that we already have enough grounds to make amuse that defense attorney now. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Ickley is our next speaker, after that is Jeff Lesansky.
Thank you very much. My name is Cheryl Ickley, I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, I speak for myself, as I said multiple times, any official statement or decision by Occupy Los Angeles goes through our General Assembly, so I'm speaking on behalf of myself today. What I'd like to do is give you a little bit of background with my involvement with Occupy LA, because I realize I haven't really done much of that for you yet. I started with Occupy Los Angeles on September 25, 2011, three days into the pre-planning process. I started the Civic Engagement Committee, I started the Welcome Committee, and I started the Accessibility Committee, and I'm also one of the original city liaisons that started speaking with the city in regards to our occupation. I want to tell you a little bit about the Civic Engagement Committee that I began. Civic Engagement is the individual and collective actions designed to identify and address issues of public concern. That's what the Occupy movement is all about, is addressing these public concerns, and identifying what they are, and starting to come to solutions for them. I'm also one of the ones that fought really hard for us to occupy outside of City Hall, because I understand, my First Amendment right has five tenets. Three of those tenets are the right to freedom of speech, the right to peacefully assemble, and then, my favorite tenet of all of the First Amendment tenets is the right to petition my government for redress of grievances. Like I've said before, we have a very long list of grievances, as I believe many of you do too, because you live in the same world that we do, endless wars, economic injustice, healthcare issues, joblessness, we can go on and on and on. I am here to redress, to petition my government for redress. Redress just means to fix, or correct, or to set right, and that's what we're here. We're here to set right and solve these problems that we're facing. I think, and we're less than 10 weeks old, we're not an official organization, we're really a movement, and I think in the last 10 weeks, we've done a lot of great things, and I hope to do a lot great more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Lesansky, and then after that is Arnold Sacks. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Jeff Lesansky, I am from Occupy LA, and I speak for myself. A little while ago, we realized the amazing incredible opportunity that we have in Occupy LA, to really address a lot of the concerns and needs for a lot of the people around this area, that really struggle with emotional and economic hardships, especially the homeless community. And so, what we have done is that we have created this space, through what we call our wellness tent, where people can actually come and talk, and be listened to in a very empathetic way, listen to the concerns that they have, and then we try to actually find assistance for these people. And when I mentioned this, and I threw out the need that we had, all of a sudden, I got all these social workers that wanted to help us out. I just wish I could show you the list of people that, you know, that are willing, you know, that have professional experience, that want to help us in this. And then, as we found like more and more resources to try to connect to, to try to find assistance for these people. And it has been a slow and struggling process, but we are really, really starting to grow, and I see a lot of amazing potential in this right now. And the concern that I have right now is to make sure that anything that we do going forward, will be able to accomplish the same type of potential that I see, through the amazing connections that we're building. For example, will, if we are in a building, will the homeless actually be, will we be visible? Will we be able to reach out to them? Will we be able to actually provide the, not only beds, but also like the emotional support that they need, and help them, you know, able to accomplish a lot of the, persevere through a lot of the opposite goals that prevent them from actually having a fulfilling life? And so, I want to make sure that anything that we decide, and the city decides, really is able to make sure that these people, that these homeless, I need to know that the help that I can provide them through this, will be also provided through the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'm going to hit this dead horse again, about the business tax reform. Here's an article from August 3. In Los Angeles, the city long derided as unfiling the business because of its tax structure. Via Regusa wants the city council to consider a 10% cut in the gross receipts tax. At a time when we are facing severe job losses in the city of Los Angeles, the city needs to look at every possible incentive to attract businesses and keep them local. President Eric Garcetti and a councilwoman called for more business-friendly taxes, reductions in the gross receipt tax, and increasing the threshold for which businesses are exempt from taxes. The city, in its actions in September and November, decided that they would cut the gross receipt tax for brokerage, mutual funds houses. Oh, and by the way, this article was from August 3, 2009. So, changes. But really, there was another article, Vernon Shot at Democracy. It was regarding an LA Times editorial regarding charter amendments. So again, I ask about this 8% change you made regarding local businesses, because again, I say, the city attorney mentioned that when the charter was discussed, local businesses were defined as county and state. So what changes did you make, in the hour and a half that you had a discussion? I understand there's going to be a change in leadership, I believe Mr. Weston might be taking over as council president, and one of the things he wants to do is eliminate some of the theatrics on this side of the microphone. Here's a clue for you, Mr. Weston, eliminate the theatrics on that side of the microphone, and maybe we won't have the theatrics on this side of the microphone, because you spend an hour and a half talking about doing something, and you get nothing accomplished.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. I have an introduction from Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to ask that the 10 Chinese firefighters from Hunan Province, stand up and be recognized. Arnold, sit down for a second. Thanks, Arnold. All right. We say xie xie, they're working with the Los Angeles Fire Department, learning anything. And the great thing about American democracy, anybody can fill out a card and speak, Mr. Sacks comes every day, and tells us how to do a business, he's a great advocate, but we want to welcome you, we say xie xie, and special greetings to Kwanjo, our 30th anniversary sister city. Xie xie, Mr. Garcetti, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, very much. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler. After that is Donna Perman. Good morning.
Good morning. You're not fooling anybody, and it's going to bite you in the tuchus, all you politicians. Remember the Tower of Babel? I told you about that, Garcetti. And the people are going to rise up one day, it's going to be really horrific here, it's going to be really bad. You just don't listen to the people who come here and speak, like me, and Donna, and, oh gosh, you know, Arnold Sacks, and, you know, it's just, I mean, I'm so overwhelmed with speech here, because I can't even think of the words of the people's any name, you know, because you people are despicable, to allow, to spend all this money, to, because people are trying to make ends meet. You know, people from going to school, people trying to make payments on the homes, you people are just, are good at collecting money and spending it. And that's what you are, you are the Tower of Babel. You just like to collect all that money and spend it for yourselves, that's all you care about. And you don't think about, how much is it going to cost the person, the middle-class person? But you keep helping the rich people by taking from the middle class, and then making the poor poorer, and then you make the middle class so poor, poorer, you took the minimum payment here, retire health, it's $200 a month that they voted it in, and you just smacked it on them, and you don't have no feelings at all. Where the money, the hard money that those people make, I think the city workers should rise up and get it back. Get your retiree healthcare back. It's not right that they take that money from you, and then give it to the rich. Look at the monies that they're going to spend for the new car dealership, they're not going to pay taxes, all these, and all these businesses are going to give them all these breaks, no paying taxes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Donna Perman is our next speaker, after that will be Rick Nightingale. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes. First, I want to tell you, you're going to break my heart tomorrow, when you step down as president, and they're going to get a new one. Anyway, Mr. Weston, now I have to speak to you, and the city council's going to be the new president tomorrow, we need, I mean, end of the year, sorry. We need to stop pandering to banks, large corporations, car dealerships, and the CRA. We don't have enough to take of our city, take care of our sidewalks, and all the different city businesses that we rely on. Why you always ask sacrifice from city employees? Sanitation, they need their retiree healthcare. Instead, you rather give all businesses a break on business tax, which includes large corporations. What's money doesn't go for the employees, and doesn't go for hiring new people, but it goes for the pockets of the CEOs, who want more money than if they have millions. They may, and you want to make the middle-class private employees go against the middle-class city employees, when they should know that that's not where the problem is, is the problem is where the city council misspent, give breaks to everybody where they're not allowed to build football stadiums we don't need, and jobs that are only temporary. In the meantime, they don't, we're going to lose city employees, because if you don't make them happy, they'll just leave, and then we're going to get employees, we're not going to have anybody coming to work here, and if all the things are very, you're not having a good city, why are you going to bring people in to go to these businesses in the first place? And people are just going to want to leave, they're not going to take businesses in this city, they're just going to leave and go to another city that's running better. So, I'm hoping that, anyway, I'm going to miss you, Mr. Garcetti, when you leave at the end of the year, I mean, not be president anymore. But, you know, all the council needs to get their act together, and let's work that city, and not give it to, give it away.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the kind words, Donna. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker, and Clark Davis will follow here in Council Chambers. Good morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. My speech is about respect. Respect for your other persons, respect for what you have, respect for what you want to get out of this whole situation, especially this UC Davis thing. I mean, what gives the right to all these people? I believe in protesting, don't get me wrong. I believe in putting out the word of what you feel is wrong, but when you're ordered to disperse, you disperse. What gives you the right to block people, they can't go someplace? What gives you the right to turn around and sit, and then when the police come, you dare them to touch you, that you dare them to do anything, and now they want the president to step down, the police chief to step down, because they pepper sprayed them? Give me a break. What is this country coming to regarding laws? That's the same thing as the mayor and his 99 percenters. All right, you made your point, but you're turning around, you're blocking, other people can't come around, you're, all the trouble you're causing, and what about the council doing something about, get some hair out of their ass? That sounds bad, but it's so upsetting, with you people up there, that you people can't do your job. You take our human rights away from the people that pay, the people that do their job, the people that sit and obey all the laws. But no, you people let these people get away with all this stuff. I believe in protesting, yes, but not the way they're doing it, they're breaking the law, and you people won't do anything about it. What's wrong with you people? I turn around, and I, if I go down the street, and I speed, I get a ticket. But these people turn around and doing all the stuff that they're doing, and you don't do anything about it, because you're scared to get on the news, and you're going to be the bad guy. Like they say before, turn around and get a job, there's plenty of them around here, maybe it's not high-paying, but at least you can work. Don't eat your time to do something worthwhile, than to sit there and cause nothing but trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Clark Davis is our next speaker, here, after that will be Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time, once again, to speak with us at Occupy Los Angeles. I did come up here to speak for myself, but I really want to extend some thanks to you guys for the support that you've shown our movement, the resolution that you guys passed on October 12, I think very clearly states what this country is facing right now, it's quite clear that we're in a very precarious position as a nation. You guys have unanimously supported, I think, what we are trying to accomplish here at Occupy Los Angeles. We've been presented with any number of issues of outside influence, trying to keep us from doing the work that we did, basically, you know, criminal elements coming into our camp, which has really caused us problems, it's kind of distracted us from the issues at hand. But I do want to suggest that I think there is the opportunity here- But I do want to suggest that I think there is the opportunity here for this kind of model of cooperation between our movement, which again is trying to really move this country in a better direction, and the very city, in this case, Los Angeles, that is hosting this movement. So I would, I would like to see continued cooperation, continued dialogue, so that we and you together can start solving some of the problems that this country is facing. So again, I thank you for the support that you've shown us so far, and I hope that we can keep the dialogue open and really start solving some of the problems that are very obvious. Thank you, thanks again for your time.
Thank you very much as well. Yvonne Michelle Autry is our next speaker. And then after that is Matt Dowd. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti. And it will break my heart as well. I think you are the most gracious, kind, and considerate president of the city council, but I do encourage you on your appointment as mayor of the city of Los Angeles. I encourage, and I speak in solidarity with those who are protesting, because you have to draw attention to your movement in order to get positive response. And the very reason that the police will not arrest them is because they do not want to draw positive attention to the grievance and to the issues that these people are bringing before the council. That is why they're not being arrested, just for that man's, for his YI. Now, I wanted to speak on behalf of the homeless, especially at this time of the holidays, again, and continuing with provisions and food, because I feel that the city or the system is responsible for this constituency, which it has created, much as kind of a mass manipulation, population control mechanism experiments. I believe it's an exercise in experimenting, mass manipulation, population control, much like the experiment of Tuskegee and the crack and the AIDS epidemic in the black communities. And because of this reality, which is not covered up, I believe that the system is responsible for this constituency until they are able to recover their life skills. And again, in continued solidarity with those who are outside. And for those who are unaware of some of these ongoing other covert illegal experiments on constituents perpetrated by the paramilitary police and/or military, causing damage to the cervical, lumbar, and/or sacral, or thoracic regions of the back, these are microwave and laser beams, just for that record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. After that will be Matthew Cotanjin.
All right, thank you. Yeah, first of all, the Occupy L.A. movement doesn't have any steam. Look at all the empty seats on this television show. It should be full here. I tried to tell them that. I got no respect, because, you know, that's how you do it. That's where the people are, watching and listening. We've been doing it for five years. We talked about the First Amendment was the number one thing we came here for. But you just don't read it out of the book. There's been a myriad of cases. And there's a lot of legal history that examines all of these activities. And I know, because I won a preliminary injunction against this very body right here in federal court for issuing a permit, and the court ruling is that permits are only required for large groups, because they do interfere with the public, and they're interfering with the public. And that's why they lost in New York. And I gave the info, and they've all had it here. It's in our lawsuit. That's the very fine detail of where we're at right now. You can do this, what I'm doing, because I'm an individual, and that's my free speech as an individual. And it's my time, right here on this podium, and nobody can get in the way of it, and not any of you. And there's a court ruling about that, too. So you can be held personally accountable, and they can take money away from you if you interfere with my speech when it's my time on the freaking podium. And I can use the other word if I want. And I will if you interfere with me. Because Eric Garcetti's done it a lot, and he's cost the city a bunch. A bunch, yeah, it's coming, it's a bunch. So let me take 10 seconds right now. I want to take 10 seconds to remember my dad's sister who just passed away from leukemia. Thank you, city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Cotanjin, and after that is Philip Cotanjin. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Councilman Garcetti, members of council. My name is Matthew Cotanjin from AAA Disposal. We are a fourth-generation waste and recycling company in the city of Los Angeles. I've spent 22 of my years working for the family business, and I spent two-thirds of my adult life working in this city. We just received notice today that the city environmental committee, energy and environmental committee, is going to be pushing the five-year notice for waste and collection, for commercial waste collection in the city. And the difference between a non-exclusive franchise agreement is the fact that our family heritage will continue. The exclusive will mean that our family heritage will discontinue. We will be no longer in business. We'd have to sell all of our trucks, our equipment, our yards. And once we sell our equipment, there's no going back. And my heart goes out for my family, my heart goes out for all of my drivers, that, you know, we all work very hard. You know, the city of L.A., I understand, is at 65% recycling, but I think it's a lot more than that. Unofficially, it's probably around 70%. And I appreciate your time of taking, taking my speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Philip Cotanjin. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. My name is Philip Cotanjin. I'm a resident in the city of Los Angeles. I live in downtown L.A. I was actually born in downtown Los Angeles. I really have a strong connection to the city. My grandfather started our family business when he came back from World War II. My father took over. We're a small family business. We have, we operate 10 trucks in the city of Los Angeles. All of our trucks are clean. They all have particulate trap muffler systems, zero emissions. We just bought our first clean fuel truck, and we are concerned that, we just, we just left the environment and energy committee, and they passed the five-year notice to put a franchise out for all the waste permitted haulers to go to a franchise system. And our concern is that if this franchise system goes out, and it's an exclusive system versus non-exclusive, meaning exclusive, whereas there's only one hauler in one geographical area, eliminating all competition. And that's our concern, because we've been in business for three or four generations, and we've been competing in open competitive markets. And our concern is that if the city implements an exclusive, and I understand it's not exclusive to the entire city, it's non-exclusive to the entire city, but there's small regions within the city that will be exclusive, and that would force us to bid and compete on the political level, where we can't compete with the multi-billion-dollar companies of Wall Street. We're a small family business, and we want to compete within an open competitive market with all the regulations in place, and we want to play by the rules. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, you as well. That will close our general public comment. We will go to our commission nominee, and that is item number 19. If I can ask Douglas Epperhart to come forward. Is Mr. Epperhart here? There he is. Come on forward, and Mr. Kirkorian, I'd like to recognize you. Yeah, whichever chair you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm pleased to introduce you to Mr. Doug Epperhart, who is the mayor's appointee for the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Mr. Epperhart has a very long track record of commitment to neighborhood empowerment. He was there really at the beginning of this exercise. He's been the chair of the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council Organizing Committee and Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council Board Member since 2000, well, since 2000. He's served on the Neighborhood Council Bylaws Task Force, the Elections Task Force, as a representative to the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition, and has been truly one of the leaders of this movement from the very beginning. He'll be an important addition to the board, and I would ask you for your I-vote in support of his appointment.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Epperhart, would you like to add anything about your willingness to serve?
Just that I thank the mayor for the opportunity, and all of you, to serve the neighborhood council system in a somewhat different capacity, and I look forward to the coming years.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning. Thanks for stepping up to the plate.
You're welcome.
It's a very exciting time to make the democracy work. Grassroots democracy, which is what neighborhood councils are all about. I'm a little conservative on my positioning. I believe they should be people who live in an area, not work or own property, but it's a charter issue, and it does cause problems. So I accept whatever's put in front of me. I got eight neighborhood councils. Even when they have problems with themselves, I stay out of it, because that's part of the democracy. The best part is, they put a lot of time and energy, and they love their community, and they don't get paid a dime. So it's really, for me, very impressive to have people engaged in community. One question, and I know the Chair, Mr. Kirkorian, is 10 steps ahead of me on this, is neighborhood councils want to hold elections next year. They don't want to hold off and anything else like that. And we figure we can do it in my district. People care enough that they can organize it. What's your thoughts about elections next year?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the basis of the democracy. That's where it all begins. I think we have to do that. I don't think there's a choice. I know in the Harbor area, we have already begun the process of mending bylaws to go to a selection process, so that we can actually have elections every year. You know, I can't stress enough how important it is for people in their communities to create their own democracy in a sense. And elections, selections, whatever you want to call it, that's also the best outreach opportunity we have, and to draw people into the system.
Yeah, even the occupation movement around the planet talks about democracy and the robustness of citizen engagement. As I pull in my car every morning and see the tents around City Hall, I can, I have to remember, why are they there? Well, they're there for issues that matter, and this is how they're working it out through the democratic process. Who should pay for these elections?
Well, you know, in the early days, 2002, when we held the first elections, we didn't have any funding. We did it with volunteers, we did it door-to-door. It was truly grassroots. You can reach a lot of people for a small amount of money. I think attitude enthusiasm goes a long way, and we have lots of volunteers. I think neighborhood councils, which have their annual funding, are probably going to be capable, for the most part, of covering the minimal costs of an election. I really do. I think we used to do it. It would be nice for the department to have a little bit of money. It would be nice to have a little bit of money to handle election challenges. But I think for the most part, most neighborhood councils, getting help within their region and from other neighborhood councils that have the capabilities, can do these elections.
I like that, and I like your attitude. That's the healthy attitude that we should have. You know, Venice has 1,200 people who vote, you know? And we get 500, 600 in the different other neighborhood councils. So thank you for stepping up, and look forward to your leadership.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
One, I also want to thank you for your service and your hard work. It's very difficult to be able to keep an open mind when you have so many different stakeholders and interest groups and objectivity and balance. So I do appreciate the discipline that that requires. But given that process, studies have been showing that the makeup of the neighborhood councils on those positions, and when you look at the population of the city of Los Angeles, there seems to be a disconnect. And so as a commissioner, and given your experience, on top of the fact that we have limited budgets, we don't have enough city personnel at the neighborhood council meetings because we just don't have them, what strategies or what concepts you think could be stimulated to bring forth a scenario that allows neighborhood councils to have a greater reflection of who lives in the city?
For the coming year, what I would like to see the board, the department, and neighborhood councils do, is to commit to the idea that in 2012, we will have a year of participation, that we will make a real effort throughout that year to draw new people into the system. I have seen over the last decade, new people come into the system. It seems to be accelerating in the last year. And I think one of the reasons is, is that we have, because of financial realities, moved to a, what is in essence, a do-it-yourself system. That there is a greater and greater reliance and responsibility for the volunteers in the neighborhood council system, which actually, I think, helps create the idea among them that what they do is even more important. And I think the way you achieve greater participation beyond just getting the word out, is to let people know that what they are doing is real, that it's important, and that it can impact their neighborhood. And so I would like to see, you know, the whole system make a commitment for next year to do that, greater outreach.
As a humble suggestion, perhaps working with the adult schools, English is the second language, there are many people who are learning about the civic process as they learn English. Perhaps we can introduce a curriculum with subject matter that speaks to the role of neighborhood council, so as they're learning the language, they're learning about the civic process. And we open doors to whole populations that come from other places that perhaps were never given that opportunity to participate because of other standards in other places. It's just food for thought.
Absolutely.
The same thing with the universities, young people that are involved in civic government, learning political science, having them learn about these positions, so that they could have access to those decisions as they stimulate a level of interest for their community, because sometimes they're best kept secret.
Oh, absolutely. And I would just say that in the Harbor area, we have opened up a relationship with L.A. Harbor College, for example.
We need to just cultivate the leadership internally, and hopefully have that organic sense of representation. So thank you again for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Across the country, and your studies, and neighborhood empowerment, what do you know about other cities and what they do?
Well, I would tell you that in the early days, when USC was doing its neighborhood participation project, I was very involved in the focus groups, as well as the workshops that they put on. A lot of what was done talked about places like Portland, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Columbus, Ohio, even Shanghai, China. And so I've, you know, been involved in, as a participant, the reports that were written, the work that was done in surveying the neighborhood council system, and also looking at what they do in other cities.
Well, 2012, you can take a fresh look at that. Thank you for being part of the board now, as an appointee, and I appreciate your work for the city. But if you look at what others are doing, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for a vote. Thank you for your answers and for the discussion, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations. Hand for our commissioner. It gives me a great pleasure to recognize my friend and colleague for a very special presentation of dear friends who have come here from Hollywood, who many folks are familiar with this publication, which is celebrating 25 amazing years there in the heart of Hollywood, bringing our most famous asset in neighborhood to the entire world. Tom?
Mr. President, for a quick interdiction, thank you very much, Ms. Perry and everyone here. Discover Hollywood magazine was created by these two great people, which really was the seed of many good things to follow in Hollywood. Discover Hollywood by Oscar Nyla Oslanian, great constituents of the Las Feliz community. And the other day, as your representative, I'm proud to represent you as we chair Hollywood at the chamber, we awarded them with the Discover Hollywood 25th Anniversary recommendation. We just want to salute them and thank you for your work, because it's so important to promote our communities. Oscar for a quick word.
Mr. President, Tom Labange, all the distinguished members of the city council, I thank you very, very much. Getting an award like this is an opportunity to thank some people, and I really want to thank my mentors from about 30 years ago, names that a lot of people don't remember, but people like Bill Welch, Jack Foreman, Stan Sparrow, Bob Seelig, and of course, the great Johnny Grant. I mean, they gave me the opportunity to really stretch my creativity at a very important time, so I want to thank them. And at that time, things were not quite as great as they are right And at that time, things were not quite as great as they are right now. I want to thank you for really being a great leader in the-
Mr. Garcetti.
Eric Garcetti, absolutely. Not only a great president of the City Council, but a great councilman for the Hollywood area. You really did a fabulous job, so thank you very, very much.
And a quick word from Nyla.
Thank you very much for this honor at this very, very important time of the year, just of Thanksgiving. And I'm so grateful. I'm grateful to Eric Garcetti for the great work that he's done in Hollywood and of course, to Tom. And I'm so delighted that my dear friend, Nan Gillard, has come from San Antonio. We started in Hollywood when we were 12 years old and her father was the manager of the CineGrill. We go back a long, long way. And it's a very, very special day and a special time. Thank you all so very much. Thank you, Eric, for all you do for us, and thank you, Tom.
Nyla, thank you. It's Discover Hollywood Day every day in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and congratulations again to our Oslanians for their great, great work. 25 years. Here's to another 25. And for those who want to discover Hollywood, don't forget this Sunday is our annual Christmas parade. So we'll see you then. Next item called special, please.
Item 15, called special by Councilmember Labange and Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, the Chair of Transportation, will start discussion. Then Mr. Labange will recognize after that.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This was a motion that Mr. Labange actually did, and he'll be back to talk about it as well. But I also called it special myself as Chair of Transportation Committee. One of the issues that we have to focus on is bicycles and sidewalks. Frankly, a bicycle goes on a sidewalk when it finds the person riding the bike, that there are issues on the street. So they get on, they get on the sidewalk. But what about the pedestrians on the sidewalk? What about safety on the sidewalk? Frankly, two days ago, I was walking, which I love to do, and a bicyclist was coming by. I stepped to the side and let the bicyclist go by me. And he said, "Thank you very much for doing that." So courtesy among a pedestrian and a cyclist is important. But explain the law and why we're going public here because the public really needs to know.
Mr. President, Paul Smith, CLA's office. Currently, the Minnesota Code does allow for bicycles to be on sidewalks as long as they do operate in a safe manner. The motion that was submitted by Mr. Labange expressed some concerns, as you just talked about, as the dual purpose of the sidewalk is bicyclists and pedestrians. And I think the committee was trying to harmonize the language in a new ordinance or some language coming out of a joint report from the City Attorney DOT and the LAPD. The language of the committee reports suggests that the current code sections may be difficult to understand, maybe as clear as they could be. Maybe some drafting of some language that kind of defined the roles of the pedestrians and bicyclists on the sidewalks. Also to maybe identify places and why they would be prohibited. There are actually two sections that talk about two different things. But I think this is an attempt by the committee and the council to have a review of how bicyclists and pedestrians can occupy that same space in a safe and sane way. I think what you're asking for them to come back and to look at these issues, review them, and then come back to you, your committee, and to the council with a report and maybe a draft of some ordinance language.
Thank you for that summary. And to the viewers out there on Channel 35, if you have a point of view on bicycles and sidewalks, now's the time to express it to your council member of what you think the best way to operate is. But this is Mr. Labange's motion. Mr. Labange? Great.
Mr. Labange.
Hey, Mr. Smith. You ride a bicycle?
Yes, sir.
You ride on the sidewalk?
I have, yes.
Yeah, so I think it's important, as Mr. Rosendahl spoke, we have this discussion because as the, we encourage cycling, we also encourage walking. And I saw a situation where there was a young lady walking southbound on Grand Avenue, west side of the street. And she was looking at her BlackBerry, walking down the sidewalk. And then a guy came north on the bicycle. He was a little offended. Now, she had no realization that he was going to come, but there was a little connection there, confrontation. Awareness, you know, whether we, in Hollywood, you cannot ride your bicycle on Hollywood Boulevard, correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, those are the situations which are noted in your motion.
Do we do that? And I see there's a green line out here on Spring Street. Where's the green line northbound?
I don't know, sir. I know it's going from here down Spring.
Right, but they gotta go both ways because Spring's one way. The point being, there's a much driver's education as well as cyclist's education. I worry, because I was on the MTA Board, and one of the tragedies was of a USC student who was driving on West Adams Boulevard on the bike, on the sidewalk, left the street, went into Figueroa, and an MTA bus. It was a tragedy, tragedy. People leave the sidewalks right now. And where's DOT right now? They're usually always over here. Want to come up, you DOT? Tell us about this here. Could you hold my time just for a moment? I didn't know DOT's out here. Hi, identify yourself so we can-
My name's Nate Baird. I'm a bicycle coordinator.
Sam, we didn't hear you.
My name's Nate Baird. I'm a bicycle coordinator with DOT.
Right, so what do you think about this? What do we, what do we see in the future? You can address the chair. It's easier when you speak right in the microphone and look that way.
We definitely do need to look at kind of reviewing the language that we have now and clarifying what the rules of both bicyclists and pedestrians are on our sidewalk and when there are exceptions for those rules.
Right, and then if you have a "walk, don't walk" sign and it's down to one second, but you're still on a bike, you could kind of sprint across the street. But what is the driver's awareness? Who has the right of way on that when you enter the street? You gonna look at that as well?
We'll look at that as well. And we'll also bring LAPD in on those conversations. And they've been in contact with our state folks.
And what about the green line? You gonna get a green line going north on Main?
We are working on getting the green line on Main Street. We're hoping to do that next, early next year.
Okay, and what kind of paint did you use out there?
The paint was, specific type of paint to work well in all those concrete areas on Spring Street. We're also kind of evaluating how the thermoplastic works on First Street. So we're evaluating what paint we're going to use as we move forward.
Safety number one issue. And popularity of cycling is increasing, not just for health and recreation, but absolutely for mobility. And safety is so important. And I know Mr. Reyes led the way on Seventh Street and the transformation of Seventh with a road diet there. So these are important things to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's in Boyle Heights on First Street, right? The testing?
Yes, in Boyle Heights, on the east side.
Wondered what it was. Good to know. All right, thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the report, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 18, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, number 18.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, but I'd like to see if Mr. Alacon is here. Oh, you want to kick this off like you did yesterday? We'd ask Mr. Alacon to kick it off just like he did at committee, and then I could follow up on some of the issues. As we promised several weeks ago, this item would be brought to the council today for verbal discussion to seek input from colleagues so that the CAO would know what the breadth and depth of the report is.
Yes, Councilmembers, first of all, I want to thank Chairman Parks for moving this agenda as requested. I also want to thank Miguel Santana for his recommendation, his report. I concur with his recommendation that we should move forward with the ordinance. But we're not quite ready to move forward because we would like to, what I would like to see happen is that we separate the scorecard from the ordinance and just indicate some general factors that we would, we would recognize in the banking responsibility ordinance. And then a scorecard should be developed by an outside entity. And the reason that, that is, not outside entity meaning contract out, but separate and apart from the ordinance because that would give us the opportunity to change the scorecard if we need to down the road because societal factors have changed and we want to target different issues. But the bottom line is that the committee was very receptive to the ideas. Where Mr. Santana and I are different is, Mr. Santana has a more conservative approach to the scorecard in terms of getting less information, more standardized information, such as CRA information. And I believe we can be much more aggressive and get much more detail, such as the city of Cleveland, the city of Philadelphia, which have already implemented this. The city of New York has demonstrated in pamphlet that I handed out to the committee yesterday that they actually get this information and they don't even have an ordinance. And, but they do have a motion for an ordinance. And the President of the City Council has indicated that she expects that to pass very shortly. And she indicated at a conference I went to last Friday that they had a substantive majority that could override a veto if necessary. Just to give you an indication, this ordinance is being considered in Boston, and in Pittsburgh, in Denver, in Seattle, in the city of Carson. And it is, it is a way to stimulate reinvestment. What so many people ask, and Mr. Zine just asked me in a sidebar conversation, is will this be the death knell for some banks? And I say, no. It's actually going to be an incentive for all banks to invest more in Los Angeles. It is, when we can understand, when we get better information and put the full light of day on this, on this subject by creating this scorecard, we would be in a better position to know where the banks need to negotiate, where they need to come forward with more reinvestment in our community. So banking responsibility is not about kicking the banks when they make a mistake. It's about incentivizing all banks to do more in our communities because they are profiting from our money. In the case of the city of Los Angeles, where we have $6 billion in cash essentially available in our budget process and additional upwards of $25 billion when you look at our pension system, that's a lot of leverage. And that's, that could create a lot of community reinvestment. The city of Cleveland has implemented this program for 20 years. And in doing so, they stimulated $10 billion in additional investment. And they have, they have more reinvestment, two to three times more reinvestment than any other city of their size in their region. And that's a bold statement. The bottom line is that as cities do banking responsibility, you will find that, that it's like the squeaky wheel getting the grease. They will get more reinvestment. If we don't do it, somebody else is going to do it. And they're going to be able to stimulate reinvestment in their community. It won't be us. I believe this is the responsible thing to do. I believe it's our fiduciary responsibility when spending taxpayer dollars to conduct this kind of process to receive more information so that we can negotiate better deals for the city. And I believe in the long run, and maybe even in the short run, it will reduce the interest rates on our bond purchases, or bond transactions. It'll reduce our, increase our profits on deposits. I believe it will, it will stimulate much more community reinvestment and allow us to focus on some problems that we haven't had the opportunity to focus on because we just didn't have the information. And so I've committed to working with the CAO over the next month to try and hone in on a scorecard that will work and bring back a proposal that will include, one, a banking responsibility ordinance that is not too specific but allows us flexibility to establish a scorecard. Number two, I postulated and will continue to discuss with the CAO, the possibility of establishing some kind of committee that includes bank firms as well as community reinvestment folks who are experts, who understand what we can ask for and what we can't ask for, to do an annual review in terms of the scorecard, to ensure that it's a fair scorecard, and other factors that we will incorporate. I've also offered, by the way, to look at my own budget to front-load the payment to do that assessment and give us the opportunity to implement this for one year and then come back and improve upon it and hopefully not on the next council member's budget. But with that, I want to thank again Mr. Parks for conducting the hearing yesterday and all the committee members. I think we are moving forward. And I think as the CAO asked, we're hopeful that we can get something done before the holidays so that people will know that we're holding banks accountable sort of as a, as a holiday gift. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alacon. Next on our queue, Councilmember Garcetti.
Park, to President, and thank you, Mr. Alacon, for your work on this, and Mr. Parks as well, as our CAO, our community members, our financial institutions, our churches and synagogues, and everybody who is focused on this. Gracias por su ayuda y participación. You know, Los Angeles has been one of the hardest-hit cities by the foreclosure crisis. And since 2007, approximately 46,000 properties have been subject to foreclosure. And nearly 10,400 properties have been subject to foreclosure in 2010. And 7,600 properties have been subject to foreclosure during the first nine months of this year. This is a part of the devastation that includes the city's 14.8% unemployment rate, even if it's gone down maybe a couple tenths of a percent. One of the main objectives of responsible banking ordinance is to help prevent foreclosures in order to keep tenants in their homes and maintain the stability of our neighborhoods. I'm proud that we have aggressively pursued the rights of homeowners and neighborhoods. I created the nation's first foreclosure eviction moratorium and introduced a motion last week to extend this moratorium for another year. And colleagues, we've always voted to do that. And it's been a sad thing to do each year because we're like, okay, well, a year from now, we'll be in a better place. And each year, we see the problem continues. I also authored the anti-foreclosure blight ordinance and homeowner fraud protection ordinance, which created a foreclosure registry and worked to support and establish hotlines for assistance in modifications. These measures have helped a lot of people, but they're not enough. I think one of the things that I like in the report that I've seen here is the ability to disclose the number of mortgage modifications and disclose if any of these modifications include principal reduction of forgiveness. I want to praise those financial institutions who have done a good job with that. And I want those institutions that have not to have the incentive and the pressure to do the same thing. It is this mortgage crisis that got us into the situation we're in. And until we resolve that, we will not get out of it. We get calls every single week in my office. I'm very proud of the work that Sarah Dussault and other people in my office have done, calling banks and reaching out and saying, there is somebody who keeps telling they're foreclosed, and then next month, they say, "Pay again." And then they're told they're foreclosed upon, but then pay for a few more months. And they go back and forth, never knowing if they're going to be able to keep their home or whether they should walk away. The banks, in certain cases, have been able to take over properties, and then they've illegally evicted some of their tenants. We've seen that, and part of the reason the city attorney is suing Deutsche Bank right now is based on that ordinance that we had here in the city to hold those banks accountable. So we need to make sure that we, as we move forward, include in what is coming back, that data. And I know Mr. Alacon has focused on that. But to collect L.A.-specific, you know, participation and outcome data on all relevant foreclosure prevention programs. When I've met with the financial institutions, it's true, there's about 15 or 20 different things that financial institutions could be judged on. Are they working in the community? Are they giving to nonprofits? Are they lending capital to small businesses to help jobs going out? And I want to make sure that we highlight those that are doing a good job. Because at the end of the day, what this has been about, I think, for all of us, is before we put our money in a financial institution, we want to make sure it's doing right by the people of L.A. There are those institutions, and I thank them that are doing that. For the ones that are not, L.A.'s not interested in doing business with you. In the same way that when we pass the responsible contractor ordinance, when we find out if, hey, if you're a clothes manufacturer and you're selling for cheaper, but you're making those clothes in a sweatshop, we don't want to do business with you. L.A. has that power to make sure that where we spend taxpayer money reflects the values of who we are and what we believe in in the city. So this is a good step forward today. I look forward to seeing that and the inclusion of that principal reduction in the data that we get. And in doing so, I think we can be one of the first in the nation again, building on those three or four other ordinances, that is, looking at the power we do have at the local level to work collaboratively with our communities and our financial institutions to make sure that we have a good outcome for our residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. I understand this is a discussion item. We also have next, Councilmember Parks. We also have next, Councilman Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask the CAO to come up and provide the presentation that he gave yesterday. And I think it'll give more clarity as to what he has done and some of the high points of evaluating from the initial motion, I guess, three motions, and pulling it together under one report.
Good morning. Miguel Santana, CAO. In true CAO fashion, we have a PowerPoint. It's not too long, so please bear with us as we go through it. On the first slide, I think hopefully you all have that, as well as a glossary of terms that we put together. We realize that many of these concepts are a little specific, and so we wanted to make sure we all were on the same page on them. What our primary task has been is to really balance two important values. One is our commitment to taxpayers, that we always engage in practices that result in saving the city as many dollars as necessary, especially in these difficult times. But in addition to that, the other value, which I think is represented through this discussion, is really wanting the city to use its purchasing power to leverage and promote, as well as to foster, responsible business practices throughout our community. And certainly hold those accountable who engage in practices that harm our residents. And so the recommendation before you, we believe, does both of those things. Reminds us that we have a responsibility, as fiduciaries, to always worry about our finances, as well as engage in practices that promotes responsible business. The first task we did is really to start separating out the term banking and financial institutions. If you go to the next slide. And it's a bit complicated. We try to illustrate that in the following chart. There's really two extremes in the kind of institutions that fall under the banks. The first are those that are simply underwriters, and those are financial institutions that we work with to issue bonds. The Trans is one example of that. One of the things that we've done very successfully over the last several years is that we have actually presented to you the most diverse list of underwriters in the city history. We have a combination of both small underwriters and large underwriters, a significant number of minority women-owned underwriters, so that we could make sure that we share our business with a variety of different organizations. On the other extreme, represented in the yellow, is the fact that we have some institutions that simply do retail banking. The credit union downstairs is a good example of that. In between, there are organizations that are primarily underwriters, but also do some retail services, and others, represented in B, and others that are primarily commercial banks, but also do some underwriting. And so when we look at a responsible banking ordinance, we want to make sure that we distinguish how we partner with various financial institutions and make sure that when we compare these organizations, we do an apples-to-apples comparison. In other words, look at underwriters and establish a set of criteria for them, and look at commercial bankers, which is the entity that holds our accounts, no different than our personal accounts, and have a set of criteria for them. The next slide, what we have is sort of more specific information on the various services that are available, that these various financial institutions provide. Investment banking services are bond and note underwriting, and we know them through MICLA, general obligation bonds, the Trans, remarketing of services through the MICLA CP program, swap, and the sales side advisor services when we engage in looking at a P3 option. On the commercial banking side, are specific organizations that do traditional banking and savings accounts, provide home loans, do a variety of treasury management services, including wire transfers, trust services, which in our case would be third parties to access fiduciaries, for bondholders, and asset and investment management services. Part of what you directed us to do, if you go to slide four, is to also look at a motion that was, that we, 24A, that asks us to define the term wrongdoing. Under this motion, the direction was that any institution that is defined to have committed wrongdoing would be an organization that we would not partner with for financial services. So what we did is provided a definition, and we defined it as, "When clear and convincing evidence of applicable final convictions in any criminal courts or applicable final judgments in any civil courts." We were also asked in Budget and Finance to include a piece in there regarding any sanctions by a regulatory agency. We are not including in their settlements where an entity neither admitted nor denied any guilt. We don't believe that should be treated as wrongdoing. We were also asked, well, how would we start holding these entities accountable? And currently, under the various rules that govern contracting, we currently have a contract responsibility ordinance, and through that, there are specific guidelines related to debarment. The entity that has a right to a hearing process, and once that hearing process is exhausted, that entity could be determined to be non-responsible, in which case they are debarred for five years of doing business with the city. And after two of those years, the entity may actually request to be removed from the debarment list. And then finally, we were also asked, well, what other federal and state agencies actually regular banks? And we provide to you sort of a listing of them, the U.S. Security and Exchange Commission, the Municipal Securities and Rulemaking Board, for example, on the investment side, and on the commercial banking side, Federal Reserve System, the Federal Deposit and Insurance Corporation, among others. Part of our task, if you look on slide number five, is that we went ahead and contacted a variety of different cities throughout the state and throughout the country to really get a better understanding of what they do. And many of the large cities in the country have addressed this issue. Many of them are looking at doing something more extensive. But specifically, the things that we recognize and is summarized in this chart is that they are, all in, all, Boston, Chicago, Cleveland, Philadelphia, San Jose, San Diego, and Long Beach, all use, what they do is they collect information. They have a set of specific questions that they ask, and they ask any financial institution that seeks to do business with these cities to provide this information. It is important to point out that if there's a financial institution, for example, in the city of Boston, that does not do business with the city of Boston, they do not gather information on that institution. That would sort of fall into sort of the federal regulatory area. Where they exercise sort of their authority is when it comes to doing business with a specific city. So our authority is limited to that cases only. So in other words, at the end of the day, even the ordinance that's being proposed in front of you, it will not tell you about every institution in Los Angeles. It would only tell you information about those institutions that actually do business with the city of LA. We also then asked, well, how many of you actually have, beyond just collecting information, how many of you actually have a scoring system or a rating system and a methodology related to that? And in contacting these various jurisdictions, only one, and that's Cleveland, that has that. There are nonprofits and various outside agencies in some of these cities that do some of this analysis, but in terms of a city itself, only one. And in all jurisdictions that we looked at, all of them only apply these issues to commercial banks only. They do not apply it to underwriters. And so going back to why it's important to distinguish the two, when we're in the market looking for who to hold our checking account is where we actually believe these issues will apply the most. And they all use the information and the score and the CRA, which is a federal agency that does this work as their principal mission. New York and San Francisco are currently discussing a more extensive review, something similar to what the city attorney had prepared. On slide number six, we talk about the specific challenges that we see with the proposed ordinance as it's written today. So the specific challenges that we see is that what is asked specifically, that the treasurer or finance department actually engage in extensive data collection. This is beyond the scope of the department, and we will believe require a more specific level of expertise and more specific amount of people working on this issue alone. The other major concern we have, if we begin engaging in the scoring or the ranking of various financial institutions, particularly when it comes to the underwriting side, we'll start comparing small organizations, those that we've been...
Mr. Santana, just for a second. Could you just have a little more courtesy for Mr. Santana? There's a lot of conversations going on. And he did prepare this report, and we should give him the respect to listen. So I appreciate if we could just either lower the volume on the chatter or not have it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. What we're concerned is, is that if we start ranking particular underwriters, we will be comparing very large organizations like JP Morgan against a smaller organization like De La Rosa or Loop. And as we're trying to engage in a greater diverse pool of institutions we partner with, we feel that that value will conflict with this initiative. And then finally, as I mentioned, the amount of work that would be required for the treasurer, finance director, to actually do this kind of ranking. Instead, what we recommend is, we still recommend moving forward with a responsible banking ordinance, and that we model it after what other jurisdictions have done. And that is engaging in a behavior of being a smarter consumer. No different when you purchase a car. When you purchase a car, if you're a smart consumer, you look at a variety of different sources to establish the mileage, the value, the safety, and other features that you may want to have in that car. And so we're asking that we do the same, that we actually look at and collect various pieces of information that are available either through an outside regulatory agency or information we get directly from the institutions, and use that information as a smart consumer. Specifically, we want to target those areas that we heard from the advocates, many of who are represented today, that are the most important. The areas that we want to focus on are specific to the prevention of foreclosures in the city of Los Angeles, based on census tracts, the number of jobs that are being created, and the promotion of economic growth through small business loans. In addition to that, we're also recommending, like most other cities in the country, that we distinguish from underwriters and commercial banking services. And because we're looking at the role that these banks play as commercial banks, we're asking that we limit the evaluation to only the commercial banking side and create two distinctive set of criteria. The CRA, the Federal Community Reinvestment Act, could be very helpful in less in the score that's given, but frankly, more in the information that's provided to get that score. It's a very extensive process, and it's information that could be generated specific to Los Angeles that ties directly to the goals that I just discussed. And then beyond the CRA, we're also asking that we collect additional information pertinent to the city's foreclosure prevention and principal reduction goals by census tract, not just related to goals run by the city, but other programs that may exist whose purpose is to reduce the number of foreclosures that exist in our neighborhoods, as well as to collect data based on census tract, on the number of small business loan activity that these various commercial banks provide. On the next slide, we talk about why the CRA information is important. First, it's a well-established, separate, independent department. It has a 30-year-old proven process. They actually engage in a ranking system, and the information they provide is verified, audited, and actually enforced. And if we were to mirror something on our side, we wouldn't want to do more than just take the information at face value. We would want to also engage in some level of auditing to make sure that the information is accurate. And that's where we believe it becomes much more challenging for the city to do, to replicate what's already being done. There's an extensive public comment process that the community is engaged in, and then the CRA also provides training workshops by this agency and others. In addition to that, we're also recommending, based on the advice that we received by members of the community, that we actually request additional information than just what's required in the CRA. And specifically, we want to include participation in the city housing programs by census tract, and I would add any other programs, like any state programs as well. And the two that we're familiar with, that our housing department shared with us, is the Keep Your Home LA, which is focused on principal reduction, and the foreclosure registry. And then again, focus on census, small business loans that's by census, that includes a number of loans and the total value of those loans. In terms of how we will hold underwriters and the criteria, we recommend building on a process that already exists, that your council has adopted, the corporate citizenship criteria, that begins to show their commitment to Los Angeles. We have very few underwriters here in Los Angeles. We have others that are based in other parts of the country. We want to know specifically what is it that they're doing in terms of charitable programs, scholarship programs, their procurement for minority women-owned and disadvantaged businesses, as well as their own social policies as employers. And again, specific to Los Angeles. So in our recommendation, what it seeks to do is basically put the city in a situation of being a smarter, better-informed consumer. We will hold those entities accountable if they simply choose not to provide us this information. They would be, based on the process that we have, will be deemed non-responsive. And there's a whole hearing process, as I mentioned. This information will be submitted to the mayor and council upon recommendation by my office, the treasurer, or other departments, when we're ready to purchase those services. We also recommend that this information be provided not just on the one bank or underwriter that's being recommended, but on all the various institutions that actually submitted a bid. This allows the community then to know, sort of in broad terms, what the progress that's being made, not just with the one institution, but with all of them that have sought business with the city. And that we also provide data, this data will then help you, as a policymaker, to ensure that the people we partner with are meeting your goals as it relates to various social policies. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to make this presentation, Budget and Finance, and I wanted to highlight some of the specific feedback we got from the members of the committee. As Councilman Alarcon described, there was a discussion about creating a task force to further refine the RBO policy and goals and criteria. Now, to be clear, we're not recommending actually engaging in a ranking system for the reasons we discussed, but we do believe there's a lot of work that needs to be done to actually refine the ordinance, to establish, be more specific on the criteria, as well as to monitor the progress. And this committee, I think, is a good idea and should be reflective of both the advocates as well as the banking community and underwriting community, as well as our own departments, to ensure that it's fair and transparent. There was an emphasis to prioritize principal reduction. We concur with that, and would welcome and support any more specific language on that issue that captures not just city programs, but other programs that seek to reduce the principal, so we reduced the number of foreclosures in Los Angeles. There was a discussion about providing annual reports so that a firm that's seeking to do business will provide this information at the time that they apply, they submit the, respond to the RFP, but that they also update it on an annual basis, because we don't go out to the market more than in the commercial banking, maybe every three to five years. We don't oppose that idea. You know, we have to work with the treasurer's department because a lot of the work would fall on her office, to see exactly what it would take to ensure that that information is accurate, but certainly allowing an annual refresh of that information. The banking community may actually welcome it because it allows them to show the progress that they're making in this area. And then, of course, that information should be made public and put on our city website. Again, there was a discussion about limiting the information and drilling down on the progress being made in Los Angeles, and we wholly concur with that. That's part of our recommendation. That's part of our recommendation. There was a request that the matrix of information be provided, be easily available, accessible in terms of how it's written, so that a layperson could understand. There was a very good model that Councilman Alarcon showed from New York, that would be a good model to work from, so that we could mirror something similar. And then finally, it was recommended that we add regulatory sanction to the definition of wrongdoing, which, you know, we would have to drill down a little bit more about what that means, but certainly it's something we could support as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Santana. And advice from the city attorney. The council will be ready for an exam tomorrow on Bank Financing 101. That'll be at 10:00 AM. Okay. That didn't go well. All right. Okay, Councilmember Parks.
No, colleagues, I think what Miguel went through that very well, and I think what was clarified most yesterday was that we'd had so much conversation about what responsible banking, and some people took the impression we were trying to regulate banks in the city. We're trying to create more banking opportunities. We wanted to, those types of situations. I think what came out clear is that we're talking about banks that do business with the city. And there are three different types. There are the underwriters, or financial institutions that do business in the city. There are underwriters, there are security, institutional security companies, and then there's retail banking. And the issue for the underwriters, every three years, we put a bench together to actually use them to sell our debt. The institutional securities, our treasurer used them routinely to invest and to make revenue for the city. But when we get down to retail banking, every three to five years, we put out an RFP to identify the city's banker. And I think that's the issue that comes down to, how do we incorporate much of this retail banking information in that regard? And I think it also was clear in the report that even though there are institutions or financial institutions that have a retail side and an underwriting side, there are limitations, both legally and policy-wise, as to whether underwriters can provide information on the retail side or the commercial side. And these are the kind of things that are going to be worked out. But I think that with Mr. Alarcon's comments yesterday of removing the criteria and work those things out outside of the initial ordinance will give us a chance to determine whether, by policy, we want to have a local score, or do we use things that are already being produced? Do we want to have a situation to where we are arraign banks like they did in New York, if we only have access to the one bank that's doing business? But the key is, I think, when we look at all this material, it's about financial institutions wanting to do business with the city, and if they want to do business with the city, they're obligated to do business, is to give us more information about what they're doing. And also, the criteria for underwriters and for the other institutions as far as a non-commercial have a much shorter and smaller response than retail bankers, because they do not get into loan modifications, they do not get into anything that deals with foreclosures, although another part of their financial institution may do that. So I think we've got a lot of clarity. The report, in my judgment, really gives us something to work with. And if, depending on all of the input we get today, it's our commitment is to try to, if it's fine-tuning, as opposed to restructuring, we could get this back before recess. If it's something that's going to create a larger amount of work to redo the entire concept, then that would make it come back well after the first of the year.
Okay, Councilmember Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Miguel.
Good morning.
You and I were just sharing the L.A. Voice PICO memorandum here, talking about what the next steps are. And I might say that L.A. Voice was here with us yesterday in large numbers, and I was very appreciative of their feelings, and representing a lot of the feelings we all feel. When obviously, I was talking a lot yesterday about the loan modification issue, and the scurrilous behavior of some banks in dealing with people in a foreclosure situation. As Mr. Parks so elegantly spoke, we're moving in the right direction, and Mr. Alarcon, with his leadership on this as well. How do you see integrating L.A. Voice into this discussion? And some of the occupation people that came in in pretty articulate numbers with their feelings, which also I agree with. How do we find this meeting the needs of the community that has been expressing itself yesterday in our big meeting, and also this morning?
We actually have met with them a few times, and I had an opportunity to meet again with a representative last night. And I think, for the most part, we were in agreement. There are two specific recommendations that they're making in the one pager that you shared with me.
Please.
One is that there be an annual public dissemination of the recommended information. Again, that's something that we were open to. Our report asks that this information be provided when a commercial bank or an underwriter is seeking to do business with the city, and that may be every five years, three years, sometimes more often than that. What they're asking is that that information be refreshed on an annual basis. I don't particularly see a problem with doing that. I think that the challenge would be on the implementation of that. The Treasurer Finance Department would have to be the one responsible for ensuring that that's put together, but I think it's something we could work with, just figuring out how, on an operational standpoint, how to do that. And again, I think it provides the banks an opportunity to show the progress that they're making. They competed to be the city's commercial banker five years ago, and that information would be old and not allowed. And so if they're given an opportunity to refresh it on an annual basis, they could actually tell their story about how they're being more responsive to the community. The second piece relates specifically to foreclosure prevention programs, and we specifically cite that in our report.
Right.
I think they're looking at it just not being limited to city-run programs, which we could frankly get that information on our own, but also broaden it to include organizations' programs, like the state's foreclosure program. We don't necessarily see a problem with doing that. The one area that we, you know, we're going to have to respectfully disagree is that they're asking that we request information of both underwriters and commercial banking institutions. And because some underwriters do this work, do the commercial banking, and others don't, we don't recommend that, because we want to limit it only to the commercial banking side of the house. And so, on that area, we don't disagree, but I think their two primary recommendations are the ones that I stated earlier.
Just mechanically speaking, if we get it before the end of the year and we vote on it, can we publish what you digested from yesterday, especially yesterday, where we spent a lot of time on it, and what the colleagues say today, and get it online so that people in the community can actually take a deep breath and look at it before we have to vote on it? Can we mechanically do that?
No, I think, there's two things. One is, certainly, what we would do is, our goal is to gather sort of the input that you provide and submit a new report. I think the information so far, I think we could certainly issue a revised report by the end of, well, the holiday weekend, but maybe on Monday. I won't even turn and look at my staff. They're probably not too happy with me saying that.
Everybody deserves a turkey.
But obviously, if there's a lot of changes, then it would take a little bit more time. I think trying to bring closure to this issue this calendar year, I think it's a good goal. There's certainly, at least in my office, as we're looking at the MICLAP program, I've spoken, we've spoken to the proprietaries, we're a little reluctant to move forward, even though we have the authority, on partnering with some institutions, because until there's clarity as to, specifically on the issue of wrongdoing, then we don't want to begin the process and then be told later to stop. And so, it would make, it would certainly be helpful to have some closure on this this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you again for your work on all of this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenthal. Next, we'll have Councilmember Wieso.
Thank you. Sounds like there's been a lot of progress on this, and it's truly appreciated. On both fronts, I think it's, it sounds like we're working together to move something that works for L.A. One minor point, on your point on the responsible banking criteria for commercial banks, it says disclose participation in the city's housing programs by Census Tract. I assume you also mean participation in outcomes, correct? Because we could have somebody participate, but it's lackadaisical, and maybe we want to see, you know, who's really having the outcomes and the intended within those programs, who's doing well and who's not. So the outcomes will also be tracked there as well, correct?
Well, if it's a city-run program, which, you know, this idea actually came from our own Housing Department, we would be able to tell you the outcomes, because we'll get the information. So we certainly would request that from the banks, but we would also want to get it from our own department to verify the outcome. So, you know, the participation, as you stated, is one thing, but finding out what happened as a result is important as well.
Yeah. But that's already, you intended to provide that information?
Yes, and as we, you know, this is just the framework. You know, the next step would be to actually revise the ordinance and put sort of the plan behind it. We will ensure that that's reflected in there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wieso. Next, Councilmember Gardez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask you, Miguel, it's been mentioned that there are other cities who have some semblance of a responsible banking ordinance system in place, or what have you. For example, Cleveland was mentioned earlier by one of my colleagues. Has anybody on the council, or has anybody that you're aware of forwarded to the CAO's office, any documentation showing us exactly how some of these other cities are actually following through with such a system?
We actually contacted all these cities ourselves. We went to their websites, we talked to the people responsible for managing them, or tried to. And so that's how we came up with the matrix. I know that the Councilman Alarcon went to a conference last week, and he provided me a very helpful book in terms of a sense of what some of the nonprofits in New York are doing to evaluate banks. And so, this comes from doing that kind of outreach to the other jurisdictions throughout the city. Like, for example, I have the Philadelphia ordinance in front of me.
Yeah, but with all due respect, Miguel, an ordinance is one thing. I've been an elected official for quite some time now, and I've noticed the difference between an ordinance that actually makes it onto the books, and then the difference between that and actual activity and requirements and product, follow through that ordinance.
Right.
And what I'm getting at is, I think it's incumbent upon the council to figure out, if we want something, whether it's light or heavy, in this direction with activity, we, as the council, we're the ones that budget the CAO's office.
Right.
We're the ones that budget every single department in the city. We've got to figure out and understand, get an understanding as to what kind of resources, people hours, it's going to take in order for us to internalize internal reports. A lot of the information that I would presume that Boston and Chicago, Cleveland, Philadelphia, San Jose, San Diego, Long Beach, that's on this matrix, I'm sure that nine tenths of what they get is information that's already generated at another level, and they, I would presume that at their level, at their city level, they go ahead and not only peruse through it, but they actually vet it, and then they come up with their own report. So, the main thing that I want to understand is, it's one thing for us to want something more involved in the city of Los Angeles, to who we're banking with and who we're dealing with, are they bad people, bad organizations or not? But what is it going to take for us to actually follow through with something that is our own work?
And I think we were trying to be sensitive to that, obviously, given our own fiscal challenges. What we try to do is actually provide a recommendation that try to maximize the use of existing information, number one, and that's why getting information from the CRA is important. And not just, you know, there's binders and binders of information, but being specific to Los Angeles and specific to those three areas that we talked about. As some of the members of the community testified yesterday, that sometimes that information isn't very clear and it's complicated, so we would obviously need to synthesize that. But we believe that, at least the recommendation that we have, that's before you, not the recommendation that was drafted by the city attorney, that could be done, for the most part, with existing resources. If we were to actually get into the business of ranking institutions, we would need to ensure that we're not just taking that information at face value, but actually auditing it, confirming its validity, updating it on a regular basis, and, you know, from what, in speaking to the Treasurer's Office, that would certainly take more than the existing resources we have today. And so, part of the reason we're not recommending doing that is because of the intensity of the work, and more specifically, the expertise. There's no one in the city family that's ever engaged in the actual regulation or the evaluation of banks and underwriters. We look at sort of their RFPs for the services we want to purchase, but not at, you know, some of these other areas. And so we would have to obtain that expertise. We would recommend that we do it ourselves, if we were to do that, not contract that out, so that we could assure the quality of that work. And so, if that's the direction your council wanted to move forward, we would recommend that we sit down and sort of plan out exactly what that would take to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Coria, and then we'll have Councilman Alarcon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Santana, when you were making your presentation and talking about, if I understood correctly, you said that Boston ranks only those banks with which Boston does business. And what was the reason for that again? Or gathers information only with regard to those institutions?
I use Boston as the example, but all the cities.
Right. And the reason for that is?
The reason is that local government doesn't regulate banks.
Because the regulatory authority for banks is primarily in the federal government, and to a limited extent, state government, but not at all local government. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's beyond our scope and our...
So no city in America has any jurisdiction to regulate financial institutions, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, what I'm, I think that the gathering information is a very helpful thing for us to do, and to understand what information is out there about all of these issues that we're talking about. But I am a little concerned that the information, that the universe of information that we gather is in fact not misleading. And it hadn't occurred to me until you just raised that point, but let's suppose you have 10 financial institutions, of which only three are doing business with the city of Los Angeles, and we're doing a comparative analysis of those three. There's nothing in that body of information that allows us a useful comparison with the other seven, is there?
That's right.
So we might be doing business with the best of the best, while all the worst we're not doing business with, we don't, we aren't able to compare that. Or vice versa. The three that we're doing business with might have terrible track records compared to the national standard. We wouldn't know that unless we're able to compare it more broadly to the entire industry. Is that fair to say?
And that's a very likely outcome. And when we issued letters of credit, for example, we did an RFP, and we got two respondents. And those two were not enough for the amount that we were looking for, so we had to ask an additional one. So, should this apply, we would only have information from those that actually choose to participate. The majority of the financial institutions in the country decided not to participate in that. So we will only have a very limited view on those organizations, and that's part of the challenge with doing the ranking. Because if you're a member of the public and seeking, well, who do I do business with? Who do I give my checking account to? Who do I...? And you go to our website, you may assume that that reflects all of the institutions, when in fact, it's a very small universe that we're looking at. And so, being a smart consumer is the direction we'd rather go, because we're looking at specifically the services we're seeking to purchase and matching it with those who are wanting to do business with us. What the rest of the universe does is sort of irrelevant, because we're not seeking to do business with them. And so we're just wanting to limit it in that fashion.
But on the other hand, to the extent that we can drill down in a little bit greater detail on this information about their responsibility levels... detail on this information about their responsibility levels, but we do it in a way that allows an apples-to-apples comparison to the information that's already being disclosed pursuant to federal regulations and otherwise, then that allows a more useful comparison by which we, it provides us with a benchmark against which we can compare the information that we're gathering here in Los Angeles. Would that be a goal that we would want to seek, to have parallel information with what's already being provided under federal regulations?
So if I'm hearing you, what you're thinking about is, is taking information that's already public, and just basically organizing it in comparison to those that we are doing business with who submit a proposal?
I'm not necessarily proposing that, I'm just suggesting that by taking that approach, you have a broader body of information on a national level, against which you can compare the financial institutions that we would be doing business with, rather than the narrow spectrum of only comparing those institutions that are already contracted.
The only challenge with that is that we're going beyond just what's in the CRA. We are asking for more specific information on foreclosure, participation, and outcomes, as Councilman Weezer suggested. That may not be available in the same way for the other institutions. So if you're seeking to do business with the city of Los Angeles, then this is part of the information we're requesting from you, so we'll have it for those. But for the rest of the majority, we won't necessarily have. So it won't be an exactly apples-to-apples, but certainly what's available publicly through the CRA and other things, we could, it may take a little bit more than just being within our existing resources to do that, but that's certainly something we could do.
So then we'll just need, I think all members will need to understand that if we do that, it's information of somewhat limited value, because we're not comparing it against the entire national industry. We're only comparing those that we're doing business with.
That's right.
Thank you very much. Okay, our final speaker is Councilman Alarcon, and I believe, Councilman Alarcon, we are for public comments for one minute. How did you want to handle that?
What's that?
We have public comment cards.
Yeah, I just want to make some clarification points, and I do want to get to the public comment, because they're the ones that are driving this thing. A couple of things, I want to make it very clear, I would like to see the city of Los Angeles be the first city in the nation to require the bank investment firms to also show this information, particularly those that are subsidiaries of major banks, who are participants. I believe that whatever the considerations of apples-to-oranges calculations, I believe we can overcome that with a good system, and figure out how to score them in the same way, but hold them accountable to the actions of the larger company. Let me read this to you, because this is real important. This is from the Wall Street Journal last week. And in the Wall Street Journal, the article is about Merrill Lynch, who, by the way, might have, I won't ask you to raise your hands, but Merrill Lynch might have visited your office in the last week, because they came to my office lobbying me on this issue. But this says, "Merrill bristles as B of A toils on." And I'm going to read a couple of paragraphs from this Wall Street Journal story. It says, "It's Merrill Lynch &amp; Company unit which has emerged as the most profitable part of the company, has become the source of some friction for Mr. Moynihan, who's the CEO of B of A. Some Merrill employees have taken to complaining that the securities firm is being dragged down by the problems dogging its parent, just three years after the bank rescued Merrill from a financial market meltdown. After fielding angry client calls over the bank's attempt to impose the debit card fee, one Merrill Lynch wealth management advisor in the eastern United States said recently that he hopes to cleave his company from Bank of America. 'We'd like our identity back,' said the advisor. 'I'd love to see a spinoff, because we're guilty by association.'" I read that not to talk about Bank of America and Merrill Lynch specifically, but the point is that it works. The fact is that when the public cried out that they didn't want to pay the $5 on the credit card, it hurt Merrill Lynch. And so the whole point of this is not to even need to use the hammer, but the fact that they have to provide us with this information, I believe will drive them to better performance. The fact that the investments that we make, the transactions that we do regarding our investments of that $30 billion portfolio, or the $6 billion portfolio relative to the general fund, those transactions are even more important than the fact we deposit our money in one bank. That is less significant. We have so much clout, if we use it on behalf of our taxpayers, it's their money, remember? They would use it if they were buying a car. We can have more clout if we include the bank investment firms and tie them to their holding companies. If it's B of A, then Merrill Lynch should be accountable for B of A's action, and create internal pressure to get B of A to act right. They have a lot of work to do to come back from the foreclosure crisis and the actions that occurred there. They have a lot of actions to come back from the bid rigging scandal that they were involved with, from the swap deals that they failed to renegotiate with us. They need to be held accountable. So I think it's real important for us to include the bank investment firms as well. We just have to figure out how to score it. Otherwise, I concur with Mr. Parks, that let's pass the banking responsibility ordinance, let's come back with a scoring system that works, let's make a decision about whether to include the bank investment companies or just the depositors. With regard to the depositors, I want to mention one thing. One of the critical problems that we have in this city is that some banks fail to place their branches in communities that are disadvantaged. In New York, they have a banking development program where they had set aside $200 million to deposit in areas, in banks that would invest in disenfranchised areas and economically challenged areas. And the program works. They've created branches in areas that did not have them before. Well, we deposit our money in one bank. Somebody said we should empower credit unions. Did you know that they just got the power to receive deposits from the government? That just came, just a few months ago. And maybe we want to deposit our money in a credit union here? Or maybe we want to spread our money around to benefit some disenfranchised communities, as New York recognized, Mayor Bloomberg recognized many years ago. So I believe that this opens a world of opportunities for us to engage in some negotiations to drive reinvestment into our community. We talk about revenue shortages, we talk about layoffs, we talk about unemployment, we talk about job creation. We need to stimulate reinvestment in our community, and the banking responsibility ordinance will do that, especially if we include the bank investment firms.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. So next, we'll have our public comment cards. And first, we'll have Alex Alanis, and then Mark Lippman, then we'll have Ann Williams. And you're welcome to come up to the queue. One minute, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name's Alex Alanis with California Bankers Association, who represent about 175 banks doing business in California. Our medium-sized bank is about 50 employees, about $250 million in assets doing business here in California. We oppose the RBO because it makes it extremely complicated to comply. There are too many undefined terms, and there are too many confusing standards with no certainty. We received the CAO's report on Friday, and are currently reviewing it, and we'll have some more analysis within the next few weeks. We've been complying with the Community Reinvestment Act since the late 1970s. It requires banks to invest in the communities in which they do business in. That information is readily available, it is available to the public, and can easily pull down from the internet, so it's not something that's difficult to get. Because we already comply, we ask that you not move forward.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Lippman with Occupy LA. I speak on my own behalf. Thank you very much. First, I would like to say I'm very happy to hear that we're talking about how we're going to get this passed and not if. I think that's a big step forward, so thank you very much on that. This measure is so important, because the banks have been allowed to go free-for-all for so long without any regulation. I think that on top of this, we should be talking about regulating the banks, of making sure that their practices are held accountable here, that we do start looking at principal reductions, and stopping foreclosures, of actually regulating, having judicial review on foreclosures. And yes, taking a look at the shell companies that are being put forward as investments for us, and looking at what their parent companies are doing, because why should we be giving our money to banks that are destroying our communities?
Thank you, sir. After Ann Williams, we'll have Cheryl Eickley, then Arnold Sacks.
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, and first, I want to acknowledge that we appreciate that there is a lot of anger directed toward the banking industry right now, but we must also remember that this industry employs over 40,000 people in Los Angeles, and we all know that the best way to keep someone from losing their house is to keep them employed. Second, there is already a massive state and federal regulatory framework in place to oversee banks. Yesterday, I handed to the Budget and Finance Committee a 700-page report, publicly available, that is just one report by one bank to one oversight committee, and it had all the LA-specific data clearly tabbed. The city, with its limited resources, simply does not have the ability to achieve the policy goals that the motions aim for. The only thing it would do is reproduce a mountain of paper, and probably also decrease competition for the city's banking business. Finally, we appreciate the thoughtful work in the CAO report, but we think it raises more issues that must be vetted, and we need time to understand it, to see what's being proposed now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley. I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I speak for myself. I had two minutes worth of speech, but I guess we're limited to one. It's hard to say anything in one minute, but the bifurcation issue of commercial banks versus investment banks really bothers me. The banks wanted us to wait for a trickle-down economy. I want these banks to have a trickle-up responsibility. What if we had proof that Wells Fargo invested in detention centers that housed undocumented people? What if we had proof that Wells Fargo invested in Georgia's immigration, anti-immigration laws? What if Bank of America is one of the largest banks to have housing loans and mortgages in this city, and the largest number of foreclosures in Los Angeles, and they will not participate in the principal reduction? Just because they want to underwrite with us, what if they know their score is going to be so bad, they only want to underwrite our bonds? And so instead of applying for the retail?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
One minute.
Arnold Sacks, then we'll have Mike Orin. Is Arnold Sacks here? Don't see him, let's move on. Mike Orin. Then we'll have Doug Arsonoff.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon. I'm Mike Orin. I'm affiliated with Occupy LA. I speak for myself. I think the banks in this country have powered up with, like Merrill Lynch, Bank of America and Merrill Lynch are partners now. They want a muck, they lost the public's trust. They're corrupt. A lot of other entities in the banking industry are corrupt. Anymore, the American taxpayer doesn't know who isn't corrupt. So we went to a campaign to get people in credit unions. We encouraged the city council to invest their money in credit unions. At least they're localized, and not nationalized and monopolized.
Thank you, sir. Doug Arsonoff, after Doug, we'll have Ruben Getta. After Ruben Getta, we have Ruth Sarnoff.
Thank you. My name is Doug Arsonoff of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing over 360 businesses in the city that have created over 1,000 jobs. While we remain skeptical of the RBO's premise, we understand the city's need to hold service providers accountable, socially responsible business practices. We just ask the council to be reasonable, to be prudent, and to be responsible. At an expected cost of between $58 million and $64 million to the city, as well as countless jobs, it is simply irresponsible for the city to jeopardize our contracts with financial partners that are committed to our recovery. We urge the council to empower the CAO to maintain our city's fiscal integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ruben Getta. Ruben Getta, don't see Ruben Getta. We have Ruth Sarnoff, and Pastor Ryan Bell.
Ruth Sarnoff with Occupation LA. I wanted to, on page one of the ordinance, to, under city, I think it's important that you define which departments are not included under that provision, provision A. We know that harbor and airport, DWP, perhaps fire and police, certain departments may be quite autonomous in this city. And also, on page three, I want to question how reliable have been the reports from the federal and state regulatory agencies? And also, if some of what is in here is going to be happening in real time? And if we can, also looking to page four, you have instances where you say "may," and some where you say "shall." It appears the treasurer of this city has a lot of discretionary power, and I would look.
Thank you very much. Pastor Ryan Bell, Father Margarito Martinez, then Zachary Hoover. Pastor Ryan Bell.
Hi, my name is Ryan Bell. I'm the pastor of the Hollywood Adventist Church and a clergy leader with LA Voice. And I want to also thank the committee, and Councilmember Alarcon, and the CAO for their hard work on this, and for working with us to create a solid ordinance that will help our families. We need to continue to see that you're on the side of our citizens, of our members, and not on the side of the banks who have stripped families' wealth and crashed our economy. We really need to see an ordinance passed by the end of the year, by the holidays, and I'm happy to hear that that's the way that the committee and the council are moving. To see that an annual public sharing of information is given by banks, and that all the additional data about other foreclosure modification, mortgage modification programs are included in that data on an annual basis as well. We disagree with the separating out of the underwriting from the commercial for those banks that do both. We feel that it is compatible to do both for those banks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Father Margarito Martinez, Zachary Hoover.
If it's okay, I'm not going to speak, I'm going to interpret for Father Margarito. Is that all right?
Yes.
Father Margarito Martinez, trabajando en el este de Los Ángeles, en la parroquia de Talpa.
Father Margarito Martinez, at Arlay of Talpa in Boyle Heights.
Es alegre saber que si se va a revisar la ley, que si se va a pedir que los bancos hagan público, pero eso no es lo más grande que necesita el pueblo.
We're very happy to hear that we're going to have some revisions in the law here, and to make some of this information public, and at the same time, we also want to recognize that we need bigger things.
Las 99% ovejas siguen quedando pobres, no tendrán motivo por qué celebrar Dia de Gracias. Los bancos se siguen quedándose con todo su dinero, con lo que han pagado.
The 99% of the sheep continue to be poor, while the 1% of the banks continue to keep them in poverty.
No es justo que el que tiene mucho se quede con lo poco que tiene el 1%. No es un motivo, hoy no es un motivo para dar gracias en este año. Este sistema se ha acabado la oportunidad, solo da oportunidad a que haya más pobres.
And it's just not fair that a small 1% stays with the wealth of the many, and so there's not a Thanksgiving for many people out there because of the system that's created to keep the poor down.
Es necesario que el que tiene, en realidad ponga al servicio de los que no tienen nada.
And the reality is, we need those who have to put it in service of those who don't have.
Gracias, Father. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Matt Dowd, David Alexander, Jessica Duboff, and our last speaker, Sean Corden. David Alexander, Jessica Duboff, is Jason here? Okay, don't see Jason. Jessica Duboff and Sean Corden. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Duboff. I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber is acutely aware of the tough economic times for business and individuals alike. Everyone has been affected by the foreclosure process. However, the banking ordinance presented to you is not only not responsible, you will also not do- also not do a single thing to help the foreclosure crisis in Los Angeles. It will create additional bureaucracy and additional burdens to city staff who have stated publicly that they do not have the time or expertise to implement such a mandate. Large volumes of federally mandated data specific to Los Angeles on community reinvestment and practices already exist and are comprehensive and available to the public. While we acknowledge the CAO's report is a more balanced approach, we still have strong reservations with the concept of an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sean Corden.
Hi, my name is Sean Cordon. I'm born and raised in East LA and a current participant in the global Occupy movement. We are attempting to draw attention to global issues that are plaguing all of humanity. And I'd like to thank all of you guys here for all the work that you're doing in this initiative to try and help bring solutions to the issues in banking, and also allowing us to exercise our First Amendment right and draw attention to these issues. Because of everything that you've done, you've allowed Los Angeles to be the center of the world, and everybody is looking on us right now and very appreciative of everything that you guys are doing. We are going to free ourselves from the global interests that are plaguing us. The 1% is really small fish compared to the .0001% that control all of our financial institutions around the world. So I thank you very much for allowing us to exercise our First Amendment right and continue this soapbox to allow the rest of the world to realize that the people who you actually serve are not alone. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our public comment speakers. That'll close our general public comment. This was a discussion item, but I think with clear direction, we'll look forward to having the CAO report back and moving forward with the ordinance as well. So with that, we will close this item. We do not require a vote. So let's go ahead, and we'll go to the next item. Thank you again, everybody. Appreciate your presence.
Item number 22, call special for cards.
Okay, item 22 is next. We have a card from Miriam Fogler, who is in Van Nuys, and then Donna Perman. Ms. Fogler or Ms. Perman? I think they have left. And Matt Dowd here in council chambers, I believe, has left as well. So we'll close the public hearing on those items. Anybody wishing to be heard from the council on 22? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 23, we also have Miriam Fogler and Donna Perman, who left our Van Nuys chambers, I believe, so we'll close the public hearing. And if nobody wishes to be heard on this item from the council, item number 23, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item.
Item 28, called special by Councilmember Parks. A substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay. Mr. Parks.
Circulated is just a substitute dealing with reversing some entitlements on a project.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on 28? If not, we'll accept the substitute. And let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. We can take up items 35 and 36 next. And we have cards from Mr. Sachs and Mr. Dowd, who also have left. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearings on 35 and 36 if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved as well. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, would you kindly speak to the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Housing Department learned that four rental units at 2827 South Menlo Avenue were uninhabitable, and the landlord had not relocated the tenants. Due to the amount of relocation assistance being greater than $50,000, immediate action is required to authorize the relocation assistance to allow the tenants to relocate as soon as possible. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's go ahead on the findings. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is before us. On the substance, Mr. Parks.
President, colleagues, we have a situation in which we have a multifamily unit in which our own city building codes reflect that its violations are so extensive that they have basically red-flagged the building. And so, we have four tenants in that facility. We've tried to work with the landlord and the owner. They have not come forward on any cost to move these tenants. And so, we're asking the Housing Department to move these tenants with the funds that have been made available. And because it just came to our attention, that's why it's a Rule 23. So we ask approval on this so we can get these people out of this red-flagged building and move to a more appropriate facility, particularly with the inclement weather and the holiday season.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Thanks for your swift action on this. We'll go ahead and take a vote on this. We can prepare the roll on special one and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith for assistance, without objection. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on November 23rd for city business. The motion is required.
Okay. Go ahead, and that'll take it on the 20th, you said?
23rd, yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. We'll go ahead and, without objection, that takes us down to how many?
To 11 members after 12:30.
Do we have ordinances tomorrow?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Then that excuse is granted. Next--
Councilmember Krikorian requests to be excused on December 9th for city business. The motion is required.
All right. I will move that, and Mr. Zine will second, and Mr. Krikorian will be excused.
And Councilmember Corretts requests to arrive at 11:30 on January 18th for city business. The motion is required.
Okay. At what time? 10:30, you said?
Arrive at 11:30.
11:30, okay. What does that take us down to?
12 members.
Okay. Go ahead, and I'll move that. Mr. Zine, second.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Rosendahl? Nope. Any announcements? Do we have adjourned motions? Yes. Mr. Laban, do you have an announcement?
Congratulate the LA Galaxy for winning that championship.
Absolutely.
So let's give them a big hand. They won on Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Any other announcements? Yes, Mr. Parks?
I just want to advise the public that the 8th District Annual Tree Lighting in Lemur Park, which kicks off the holiday shopping season, will be Monday, November 28th at 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at 43rd Place and Degnan. We'd encourage all the public to come out and enjoy this activity.
Thank you. We lit the historic Filipino town, Parolos, which are a traditional Filipino decoration for the holidays. So you go up and down Temple in Beverly, historic Filipino town. You can see those throughout the city of LA as well. Other announcements?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Laban?
Due to a very important water line, the Griffith Park Light Festival will be postponed this year. So for those who go with families to Griffith Park over the year, go up to the observatory and see the stars in the sky.
Or go to Council District 3, Mr. Zine, and what's the Christmas tree lane there?
Candy cane lane.
Candy cane lane, sorry.
Winnetka, right after 101 freeway at Winnetka. Make a right turn, candy cane lane. All the houses decorated. Everybody's welcome to come on by. Thousands of people from over Los Angeles come and visit. Thousands of people, millions of people. Candy cane lane, San Fernando Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other announcements? Can I ask everybody, please rise in our council chambers for our adjourned motions, please? I can ask our audience members to rise, if you wouldn't mind, just for our adjourned motions. Thank you so much. And Mr. Weesar, first adjourned motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, it's sad to announce that a wife of a member of our city family has passed away. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Karen Denning Gibbs, the wife of CRA's Kurt Gibbs. Karen Gibbs was born on January 4th, 1953, in Los Angeles at the Queen of Angels Hospital to Beverly Jane Denning and John Roy Denning. Karen passed away on November 19th, 2011, at far too young in age. She was just 58 years old, and her life was taken in just a matter of weeks by rapidly progressing autoimmune disease which affected her lungs. Karen's husband, Kurt Gibbs, is someone whom many of our offices are familiar with. He has worked for CRA for many years and has become an integral part of the city family. Karen was often present with Kurt at city functions. We got to know her, and she was incredibly supportive of his work to revitalize downtown Los Angeles. The city family mourns the Gibbs family's loss along with them. Karen attended Birmingham High School and graduated from Venice High School, where she played Anne Frank in the high school production. She earned degrees from UC Santa Barbara and Cal State Long Beach. She married Kurt Gibbs nearly 30 years ago, and together they raised two children, Shoshana and Joshua. Karen spent a good portion of her career in service at the Jewish Federation for 10 years. She also worked at Alberg Jewish Community Center and for Jewish Family Services of Los Angeles. Karen was an early adopter of electric vehicle technology and wanted to make a sustainable statement by owning a Nissan Leaf, which she and Kurt purchased just recently. Karen was a member of the slow food movement in Los Angeles, and she enjoyed canning and cooking. She also enjoyed gardening, traveling, visiting farmers markets, and reading. Karen is survived by her mother, Beverly Denning, her son Joshua, daughter Shoshana, brother Gary, and of course, her loving husband, Curtis Michael Gibbs. Services for Karen are being held tomorrow, Wednesday, November 23rd, at 10:00 AM at the Harbor Lawn Mount Olive Memorial Park in Costa Mesa. In lieu of flowers, the family requests donations to the causes Karen held dear. Jewish Family Services of Los Angeles, Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation, Slow Food Los Angeles, and the Long Beach YMCA Youth Institute. Karen Denning Gibbs, may she rest in peace. And certainly, we mourn along with Kurt Gibbs, who has done so much for the city of Los Angeles and revitalization efforts. And, Mr. President, I would also ask that we adjourn in memory of Ira Michael Hyman, former chancellor of UC Berkeley, and also led this Smithsonian Institution. He passed just recently, and he was 81 years old. He passed away at his home Saturday after a long battle with emphysema. During 10 years at UC Berkeley, chancellor advocated strongly for affirmative action. Minority students' participation and acceptance increased dramatically, and he also substantially raised the amount of giving for the university from $30 million to $100 million by the time he left. As many of you know, he did a lot to improve UC Berkeley with its capital campaign program, and he eventually went on, after the Smithsonian Institute, to go back to Bolt Law School on the law faculty. I got to know him when I was in student government, and certainly, his charisma showed, his leadership showed, and a person, in my opinion, that did so much to advance access for minority students and improved financial aid for many of us that were able to have access to higher education because of people like Michael Hyman. He is survived by his wife Elizabeth, his son James Hyman, and three grandchildren. His first wife, Teresa Tao Hyman, died in 2004, and son Stephen also died. A memorial service on campus is being planned. He left a tremendous impact on UC Berkeley, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Other adjourned motions? Mr. Laban?
Join with me tomorrow, but Father Maurice Chase, who was a great fixture, 92 years old, would visit Skid Row every year, known as Father Dollar Bill. We'll have more tomorrow, but he's right through the pearly gates. St. Joseph said, "You need no check in here." He's right in.
Thank you.
Or St. Peter. I got to get my saints right. I'll get in trouble.
Mr. Rosendahl.
President, colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Richard Nicky, a longtime Angelino and a resident of Playa del Rey. He passed away on October 29th in Huhen, Thailand after a long battle with leukemia. Better known for his nickname Dick, was born August 23rd, 1935, in Chicago, Illinois. As a teen, Dick attended St. John's Military Academy in Delafield, Wisconsin, and then went on to serve in the U.S. Army. After an honorable discharge from the military, Dick went on to study at the University of Arizona, where he earned his bachelor's degree. In 1982, he finished off his education by earning an MBA at Pepperdine University in Malibu. This accomplishment contributed to his success as an industrial engineer and later as a management consultant. Dick moved into the jungle area of Playa del Rey, that's an area focused near the beach in Playa del Rey, in the '70s, while becoming a member and serving as president of the West Beach Playa del Rey Property Owners Association. He took great pride in living in Playa del Rey and helped organize the annual jungle cleanup that takes place at the end of each summer. Among Dick's other accomplishments, he also served as the Master Plan Committee from 1980 to 1983. Dick had a love of seeing the world and was meticulous in making a scrapbook about each of his trips. He took pleasure in regaling friends with pictures and souvenirs. A vacation in Thailand, Dick met and later married his beloved and devoted wife, Sunan. Dick fought his illness bravely, and though he was very weak, he insisted on attending the latest jungle cleanup this past September. Memorial services for Dick are to be announced in the coming days. Additionally, the 35th Annual Jungle Cleanup will be dedicated in his honor. He survived by his wife and three adult children, Michael, David, and Susan, as well as three grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues?